You can skip right over. You can call the meeting to order and then go to the...
Information. Do I need to explain it now?
No, you can go ahead and call them.
Okay. All right, then. Good afternoon, everyone. I call the Committee on Audit and Compliance to Order. We will take up the following item for approval, but we're first going to discuss information items. We'll be discussing one information item at this time. Item 2A is a presentation of the fiscal year 2023 audit timetable and key milestones. I will now call on interim Vice Chancellor Christina Chiapa for a brief presentation.
Thank you. So in the materials, you had two documents. One was a pretty detailed timeline document. So I didn't want to go over that, but I wanted to demonstrate that we do have a pretty detailed timeline for the year-end audit. And this was really in response. What we want to talk about is, I think, two meetings ago, there were some questions on our timetable meeting our due date. So we wanted to talk about that in a response to this. So I did instead of go through the timeline, and if there are questions, I could certainly address those. But what I wanted to do is just kind of go through a couple of high-level slides. So the first thing I just want to go over is the timetable and really our communication strategy. Also talk about the plans for the audit and compliance meetings, really, the rest of the academic year. And then also, just briefly, just to kind of give you a feel of what type of information and how we get information in our financial statements, and then obviously take any questions. So the first slide is really to talk about kind of our overview of the financial statements. This summarizes that detail, which was in that packet at a high level. As you can see, we really work on the audit kind of the whole year. It's really never-ending, and the cycle just is a little repetitive. So, you know, our fiscal year starts on July 1st. So right now, we're in the third quarter, which is like January 3rd, March. And at this point of the year, one of the big things we're working on is we're focusing on our year, our mid-year financial activities. And really, what those activities are designed, and you'll see a lot of different activities related to that in those detailed timelines, is really designed to focus on the pain points that we experienced during the year-end process to hopefully get some of those resolved, so we don't kind of carry over some of those issues during the next year-end. We're also finalizing the federal audit, which is why we're here today, one of the reasons why we're here today. And also, you know, after the audit process ends, we're doing other fiscal reporting. We're doing bond reporting. We give colleges individual financial statements. We break down our audit into individual college financial statements. So they have those on campuses. They use that for accreditation, things like that. And then the fourth quarter is kind of what a next part, which comes January, April to June. And one of the next meeting that we have, we're going to be doing, the audit plan is going to come at the next meeting. And we really start in like that April, May area. We start to do a lot of training sessions for the colleges related to the year-end. Obviously, June 30th, since that's our year-end, it's in a busy period, trying to make sure, you know, everything's in our system by June 30th. Our first quarter is really July and September. That's really, really the bulk of both the audit activities that happen and also kind of our adjustment period. So during that period, you know, we do accounting adjustments and estimates. We do consolidations. We do any kind of manual cleanup. And we really start doing analysis and putting together our reports. That's probably our busiest time of the year in our office. October happens during, in October, we present our financial statements. And then the cycle starts again in November, December. We try to finalize our federal audit and also start the mid-year training. So I just kind of want to show that kind of the cycle we follow. And again, that detailed document that you have kind of goes step-by-step into what we, kind of the detailed steps that are due dates that we have to adhere to, and so the colleges. So one of the things, based on that last meeting, that we really, that we really focus on a lot is how to make sure that we are hitting our deadlines and also the colleges. So we did have a conversation with Trustee Kim, and we also, so I want to thank him for giving some good impact on this. But a couple of things that we started to do is we started to, we've already communicated the detailed due dates to the colleges. We did it during a meeting. And then also, we sent out the full timetable on January 10th. We expect there to be changes to those deadlines based on our audit planning process. So we, we had put some estimates there. I don't think there would be any major shifts of timetables, but based on our conversations with Grant Thornton about when we're going to hit some of the due dates with them, we might make some adjustments also to the detailed timetable that we give out the colleges. Another thing that we started to do early, we always kind of sent email reminders, but we usually wait until the year-end for that.
That's sure.
So we already started to do that now. We're sending biweekly, two kinds of communications. One, telling the colleges what's coming up, what's due, and also where there are the items that they've submitted. So we're going to plan on doing it biweekly from January 2 to May. And we've been doing that because that's really not the busiest time period. And then our plan is also do that weekly then from June through October, which is really the peak audit period. In terms of meetings, we have always, and we will continue to have discussions about the audit and deadlines and due dates at the business managers' meeting with the Vice President of Finance and at the colleges, with the presidents. But one of the things we did add, per suggestion of Trustee Kim, is we also are going to have some individualized meetings. And he would actually like to attend some of them to talk to colleges that have struggled meeting some of the deadlines in the past and what we've seen. So the plan is to have some of those meetings in May and a follow-up if we need to. And finally, really, the escalations. You know, there are, there are staff and positions at both the colleges and on our end. And the plan is to really escalate things quicker through the processes. So the colleges have business managers who report to VPs and the presidents. And Amaya, and Sarah's the controller, goes to me, Hector, and then she answers. Kind of move those through quicker so that any deadline that's missed doesn't go on for very long. So hopefully, with these new things in place, hopefully, we'll have a much more successful and meet our deadlines at the year-ends. So moving on to the next slide. So here is really a list of the audit and compliance due dates, which are scheduled through the end of the year. So our next meeting is April 24th. And as I mentioned before, the plan is to bring up, bring the audit plan for '23 that we worked with in conjunction with Grant Thornton to the board. We also plan to give updates at the next meetings, next several meetings, on where we are in the year-end process and meeting our dates. I just want to say that this just represents what we're planning for the external audit side. I know there might be, there are going to be probably additional things on the internal audit side also. A couple of key dates, October 2nd meeting is obviously going to be really important because we're almost, you know, at the deadline at that point. And then October 30th is when we plan to have the audited financials. So I just want to do that. And then I think there's just one more slide, really. This is just a slide that, you know, I put together just to demonstrate, just so you can get a good feel of what are the types of things that go into our financial statements and also some of our challenges. And we're working to address some of these challenges. And some of these items that don't, that are manual is what causes our biggest pain points. So we're looking to actually implement, and I think if you were on the finance administration meeting, you'll see we're looking to implement a new system for finance, NHR. And that should help with some of these areas. And we really focus the scope of that, that new implementation to address some of our big pain points. So just high-level tax levy, which is the main part of our budget, that comes through an automated interface that actually goes several times a day with both the state and city systems. So that actually flows really well to us. Also, related to tuition and fees. Again, we have a student model that interfaces into our general ledger. And again, we analyze that and we reconcile that, but that actually works pretty well for us. And then all the colleges have affiliate entities. I think in total, it's about 80 or 90 of those. And they all use our system as their system of record now. So they're in there every day. So that actually works pretty well, too. The two real pain points that we have is related to adult and continuing education. We get a manual feed, an input actually by the colleges every month. We're actually working to automate that. So hopefully, that will interface. And on the yellow side, the other area that's a bit of a pain point really is on the capital transactions. Right now, we get that very manually. And this is really a big part of, the scope of having that automated is one of our key priorities when we implement this new ERP system, which would hopefully should go to the board quickly. So kind of, I just want to show that just super quick, just to give you some sense of a couple of the pain points and how we're working to address that. And I think that's, that's it. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Questions?
Just an observation, but this is great.
Thank you, Nat.
This is terrific, especially looking at the foundations and eventually having the foundations, at least being transparent with Central CUNY is fabulous. This is great.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions?
Great. Thank you. So look forward to updating you next meetings.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to proceed now to the action items. 1A is the approval of the minutes of the November 21, 2022 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. You'll have a second. We have a second. Any discussions? Therefore, all in favor?
You have to make an affirmative yes or no, you guys.
Yes, yes, okay. I got the feeling we were on our way to it.
It's a Monday afternoon.
It's not super, you silence me.
Right, exactly.
Opposed? Okay. And any abstentions? So moved. Motion carries. I would now like to address the policy calendar. Item 1B1 is the approval of the fiscal year 2022 Uniform Guidance Report. The university's external auditor, excuse me, Grant Thornton, has audited the university's compliance with the uniform administrative requirements. In the fiscal year 2022, Grant Thornton audited the Federal Assistance Program and funds received under the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds Program. And it is planning to issue an unmodified or clean opinion. The university is seeking approval from the Audit Committee of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to approve the university's fiscal year 2022 Uniform Guidance Report. I will ask interim Vice Chancellor Christina Chiapa and University Executive Controller Sarah Montero to provide some background on the topic. Prior, turning to the floor over to Claire Esten, partner at Grant Thornton.
Thank you. So I, so this is, so Sarah Montero, the university exec controller, is just going to do, kind of introduce the topic of the report. So within your packets, you have this PowerPoint presentation. You have a draft financial statement, which shows the federal numbers on this draft until it's approved. And then also, there's a presentation by Grant Thornton. So I just want to say that's what's in the packet. And then I just want to hand it over to Sarah, and she's going to kind of talk through it a little bit before we hand it over to Claire.
Thank you, Christina. So we wanted to cover some background. So we're going to start out with what is uniform guidance? It is, it allows for a non-federal entity that spends $750,000 or more during the year to have a single audit conducted. So the benefit of a single audit is it combines all of the grantees' federal awards into one audit. And so that is helpful for CUNY. And it also provides assurance to the federal government that the non-federal entity, in this case, CUNY, has adequate internal controls in place over those grants. The results of uniform guidance audits are due nine months after a grantee's fiscal year-end. So for CUNY, that's March 31st. In relation to CUNY's uniform guidance audit, we wanted to share what has been audited. And for FY '22, there was a detailed level transactions audited under the HERF grant, which included emergency grants. It included CUNY comeback recipients, vendor invoices, payroll costs, and revenue losses, all claimed under the grant. In addition, drawdowns of the federal funds were audited, various reporting requirements that we have on a quarterly and annual basis related to the grant, and a review and reconciliation of the schedule of federal expenditures of awards, or the CIFA. So this graph is showing a breakdown as a percentage of CUNY's grants that are reported in the statements. And if you can see, the majority of the grants are either Title IV. So those are the student financial aid programs at 51.3%. And then almost, almost equal to that was HERF at 48.55%. The other grants that are reported on our CIFA only make up 0.16% of the awards. And by the numbers, HERF has climbed a lot over the last three years that we've had the grant. So in 2020, when we first were awarded those federal funds, the expenditures were $136 million and grew this year to, sorry, $790 million reported on the CIFA and audited for FY '22. This slide shows a breakdown of what has been awarded, but not yet, in various stages of being expended by the university and its colleges, broken down by the different tranches of the HERF grant. So we received institutional funding, funding that's specific for minority-serving institutions, or MSI funds. And then the student emergency grants, which were only allowed to be dispersed to students. That's, the other, the other two that I mentioned can be spent on other things, the payroll costs or vendor costs to respond to the pandemic and things of this nature. But also for student scholarship, if the college has selected that. Did I go too fast? No. Okay. And just to, to address some of the findings that have come up and looking ahead, last year, if you, if you recall, in 2021, we had a HERF compliance finding. And so as a result of that finding, the university hosted several seminars with the colleges to ensure that they were well-versed in the compliance requirements and other topics, you know, related to expending the funds. And as a result of that, those additional meetings with the colleges, we had no, we didn't have a repeat finding in that same category in FY '22. However, in FY '22, we had a new control finding. It related to the implementation of a new accounting standard related to leases. So in reaction to that, the university is committed to making sure the appropriate staff are assigned the responsibility of identifying and reporting of these types of contracts, and that staff are continually trained in the requirements so that they are able to successfully complete these assignments. In addition, even though this, this finding was identified, the correct balances were reflected in the 2022 financial statements before issuance. That was my last slide on this. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
This point? Okay. That was for, so...
So it's Claire.
So my name is Claire Esten. I'm a partner from Grant Thornton, and I lead the audit, the external audit of the City University of New York. And I have with me David Brachman and Osama Tariq, who are my right and left hands with this audit. And we're here to present an overview of the results of the uniform guidance audit that Sarah and Christina just gave an overview. And to, the thunder was stolen in the fact that it was already commented that we will be, we expect to issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the uniform guidance audit. In your packet, you had some material from us, which I see now on the screen, that summarizes the results of the audit and the scope of the audit. We'll go through it at a very high level, but please just interrupt us with questions that you have. But again, we do it, and we'll issue an unmodified opinion. So if you advance to the next slide. This just gives you sort of a three-year history. Sarah had mentioned that this year, we audited HERF as the major program, meaning we, our compliance audit, our uniform guidance audit, was focused exclusively on the spending of HERF money as opposed to, you also have, 50% of your awards are for student financial aid Title IV. We do not look at that, or we did not look at that in FY '22. We looked at it in FY '20, was the last year that we audited the student financial aid cluster. So this year, our focus was on HERF, and we had no findings. So that was a great job by, and I will say that is no small feat for a lot of different reasons. You know, I think in FY '21, there were some findings. Management learned from that experience. And this year, we found nothing. So I would say congratulations to the large team that was very diligent with respect to making sure that the expenditures were allowable under HERF. And just a slight preview, this year for FY '23, we expect that we will have to audit the student financial aid cluster. Again, there's a requirement to audit it at least every three years, and we're at that mark. Whether we have to audit HERF also is a TBD, and we will work with management to determine whether that's going to be audited this year or not. We'll probably, hopefully, have an update to the committee at the April meeting, hopefully. So if you move to the next slide. So this just gives you an overview of the areas of focus. Again, we test both internal controls over compliance. With the federal award program, the HERF program, we also test compliance. So we look at making sure management is following their own rules. And then we look to make sure that the actual transactions are allowable, essentially. And we also look at their reporting, make sure it's accurate, that it's timely, et cetera, a bunch of different elements. So that's generally the scope of our work in the single audit. If you move to the next slide, please. So I did want to, this, I did want to just kind of update the committee from the meeting that we had back in, I think it was October.
October 31st.
Yeah, it was Halloween. That's right. On Halloween. And we issued our financial statements in early December. Between the time that we met with this committee and when we issued the financial statements, we did identify an audit adjustment that Sarah actually mentioned related to the accounting for leases. And management recorded that, corrected that error in the financial statements that were issued, which was what we had encouraged, or they knew they were going to do it. We were supportive of that decision. So that was one thing. We're required to communicate to the committee if there's any material audit adjustments. So that would be considered a material audit adjustment that was recorded. And then the other item that we wanted to communicate, there was another audit adjustment that was, I would say, immaterial but above the dollar threshold that we would need to report to this committee as an audit adjustment. It related to catch-up of depreciation expense. It's the second item down at the bottom. And that was not recorded by management. I think it'll be something probably recorded in the, go ahead. This current fiscal year, yeah.
We had it in the, we had it in the FY '22. The past part was that we didn't.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go back.
That's right. It was supposed to be recorded prior to, thank you, Sarah. It was supposed to be recorded prior to FY '22, but it was recorded in FY '22. So technically, you had too much expense in the FY '22 period. It should have been reported in a prior year. We didn't recommend that management open up their beginning net assets. Really, it was not a material entry, but just something that needed to be reported. So, and then associated with the audit adjustment for the lease accounting, because that was a pretty significant number, we assessed a, typically, when you have an audit adjustment that's pretty material, you have to assess whether there's a breakdown in internal controls that caused that error. And in this case, we felt like there was, related to the adoption of the new accounting, there was a lot of training that was done, a lot of discussions around what the rules were and what the process was going to be, what the policy related to the accounting was. But I think there was just in the, you know, when you got into the weeds of each individual college, applying those rules to their facts and circumstances, I think it just got a little confusing. So there was just some errors in the way that it was calculated. So I think management, you know, feels like next time around, and actually, there is another new accounting standard to adopt this year related to software. So lesson learned, and I think management is going to be on top of training and making sure that each college understands the accounting related to this.
Questions? Just one question, and maybe we can just highlight it. And that had to do with the revenue losses under the HERF grant? To, what were those, or?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I can get back to you after the meeting.
Would you?
Sure.
Are you, yeah, are you looking for the dollar amounts?
Well, what were the, a dollar amount and what were the reasons?
I'll say the nature of it generally is that with COVID, the university system experienced losses of tuition and fee revenue because of declines in enrollment and during the COVID period. The federal government, the Department of Ed, said, "We will allow you to use some of this federal money to essentially make yourselves whole for that lost revenue." So if you had, let's say, a college had $50 million of tuition and fee revenue before COVID was sort of their annual run rate for tuition and fee revenue. When COVID hit, let's say their revenue went down to, excuse me, 40 million. That $10 million delta, the Department of Ed said, "You can use HERF to reimburse you, to make yourself whole for that lost revenue." So part of what the university used their HERF money was for to make them, was to make themselves whole.
And we get a little bit more information on it for the next meeting, is it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So just a couple of things to round out the discussion. On the next slide, David, if you want to just go through what's being reported here.
Thanks, Claire. As Sarah and Claire have noted, that we did identify an audit adjustment regarding the implementation of GAZB 87. And so over here, you can just see the overall net effect. And so over here, you can just see the overall net effect of the net assets, assets and liabilities. So essentially, out of our sample of 18 leases, that we noted that the errors with regards to the application of GASB 87, particularly the calculation of the present value, was pervasive. So what we did was, we discussed with management overall about these discrepancies that we noted, and management was able to clean it up. Most of it was either due to the rent escalations, there was also an error identified related to the condo, and this is just the whole detail of the adjustment that was noted on there. So assets decreased by about $41 million, liabilities decreased by approximately $13 million, and this led to an overall decrease in net position by $28 million. Given the large amount of the overall entry, this was one that we determined that was important to bring up to the audit committee for this meeting. And on the next page, next slide, I'll just go over the different types of the control deficiencies. So you have, like, just your, control deficiency exists when there was just like some issue of like design and operation of control, which does not allow management or employees in normal course to prevent or detect the statements. Material weakness is considered like a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies, where there's like a reasonable possibility that there would be a material statement on the financial statements. The significant deficiency, this is something that's like considered less severe than material weakness, but one that was considered like important to bring up to those charge of governance. And in this case, that the overall net effect on, of like this lease audit adjustment is not considered like terribly material to the financial statements, but it was considered significant enough, and this is something that we wanted to bring to your attention. So I just wanted to check to see if there was any questions before I move on to the And these are two adjustments related to CUNY's, these are actually like past adjustments. These are adjustments which were considered, these were adjustments that were noted from like the prior year. However, they were not considered material enough to open up the prior year financial statements and make adjustments to CUNY's fixed assets. So you can see the detail overall. The first one was one that we brought up in October, this was just regarding building improvements for finance by debt. And the second one, as Claire noted, was just related to depreciation from prior years, which were actually recorded in FY '22, but they should have been recorded in prior years. As you can see, for the overall impact, that's approximately 0.4% to 2% to the balance sheet, like for the assets, liabilities, and net position. So we consider these entries overall to be not material enough to make a prior period adjustment, but we consider it important to report to the audit committee that these past prior period adjustments were found.
So that concludes our remarks, and we plan to issue our report hopefully sometime this week, once they're, assuming they get approved by this committee.
So with that, so we'll move to, for the approval of policy item 2A. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You're, okay. And again, once again, any discussions needed? Yes, please.
I would just point out that I think it's remarkable that we got through RIF with a clean audit. I mean, I mean, just having, we've all been through this, and we've watched how all these decisions had to be made, and some of the decisions, we didn't, at the beginning of a situation, we didn't know what the rule was, and then the rule came down, and then things, I mean, this was complicated, and it's wonderful that the university has come through this way. I also think that it's, while, it would be lovely to always have perfect audits, it is also reassuring to have the little, you know, things here and there because we know you're really there. And so I just, I think we should have confidence in our auditors and in our team, and this is good.
Well, clearly, that's good to hear and know the, to get to this point was everybody that's been involved in it and to have that to continue. So what we're saying is that this is thankful that we're here where we are with the auditing procedures and look forward to its continued confidence and, you know, ability to continue on this level. So thank you all on behalf of the committee and Jimmy. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? So moved. Okay.
So did you guys vote? Join us?
Yes, aye.
All right, just want to make sure that your voice is heard. I apologize. You're good?
Yes.
Any, any questions? Any?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure of that. So with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting so adjourned.
Thanks, you guys.